Before three minutes maximum, raise your hand on Zoom if you would like to be recognized. All right, please go ahead.
Um, my name is Nayali Rivera and this is my husband.
Hi, I'm Stephen Ramey.
And we are business owners. We own a shop downtown on Sixton Park. Are very highly affected by everything that is going on in MLK Way in front of our store. Um, to the point that we have had to make the really difficult decision. Very emotional to close our store. And we have been harassed quite countlessly. By this population. We have had to call nine one one twenty two times since October. It is very heartbreaking to see that what we worked so hard for. It's just going down the drain. And I'm not saying that we don't have empathy for people who are experiencing healthlessness, of course, it's how can you not? However, the people that are there now are causing a lot of violence. These calls have been, these nine one one calls have been due to violence, open drug use. We have had six different instances where people have come into the store. This last one, I was there alone. And a homeless man came in and became very aggressive with me. Luckily, my husband was across the street at seven eleven. However, it's very scary because our six year old is with us. We are family ran business. He's constantly there with us, so we are terrified of what could happen to our child. Few months ago, we had someone come and dump feces all over our store, resulting in us to close for the day and losing out on business. This was not just someone needing to utilize the bathroom. Feces were dug up from either a porta potty or one of the RVs and it was splashed all over our store. We do not have the resources between my husband to properly sanitize the sidewalk. And this is why we had to close. The best we could do was hose all of the human waste into the streak, probably creating a bigger health issue. And so my question is, with every plan that's coming up of additional housing and shelters, the people who are acting violently towards our store are heavily on drugs and I do not believe that they are going to qualify for housing or for shelter. So how are we addressing that problem? The drug issues is the big issue here. I'd also like to add to that. The other day, someone was shooting up in front of our store and my husband told them not to. And their response was, it is our right, mind your own business. People are, they don't care.
Thank you.
So I just like to add a little in there and I'm sure we all have families. Um, so we're down there with our kid all the time and I'm sure we were all much older than six when we found out what prostitution was. I'm sure we were older than six when we saw people openly using drugs. I'm sure our, when your parents maybe opened businesses to show you how to grow up and how you should hold yourself in public. This situation across the street has made it very difficult for us to project to him what, how he should grow up and act. And we would just like to be prioritized over people that are back there and feel like we also have a place in downtown Bremerton. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Dar Michelle Wilson and I am simply here to play a message for you from someone who could not be here tonight.
My name is Kimmy Seabans. I am a seven under a community organizer and a task force presenting Washington State Physicians for Social Responsibility. Today, I'm morally bankrupt, but also already unconstitutional anti camping ordinance effect the most vulnerable citizens of our town. I am appalled, disgusted, and more on those who need our help the most. Let me not be a solution. It will be a heartless attack on hard times, pushing them even further into poverty and medical issues is the answer. This is not a choice. It is a rooted in a multitude of societal problems such as lack of affordable and the suffering of those who already endure unimaginable hardships. That it is totally acceptable to turn a blind eye to the suffering of our fellow citizens. And our community members. Homeless does not magically make it disappear. It shifts the problem from sight, sweeping it under the rug and perpetuates a cycle of poverty and despair. And housing, mental health services, or to start a simple so people can use the restroom in a law abiding way. These are the true solutions that will uplift our community and save us more financially in the long run as well. I am urging this cruel and misguided idea on all citizens, not just those who are privileged and fortunate. Amendments. Demand that this be rep it was deemed to be unconstitutional. We have to stop these distractions and start focusing on the real issues at hand.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead in the room.
Hi, my name's Jocelyn. I am, I, I, I do a Bremerton prayer walk in downtown Bremerton and we've been doing it for the past three and a half years and and one of the things that we have noticed is that there's a lot of individuals that have not only complex issues that Kimmy was saying, but there's also a lot of really great individuals down there. And I think when we look at, when we look at this ordinance at all, and I, I, I appreciate the legal standpoint, but this is a very new ordinance. All of the cities currently that have had um ordinances of these paths, they're all having challenges at this point in time, so they're not even enforceable. So I would encourage this, this committee here, I would encourage the commission at this point in time to reinvest that money instead of looking at what kind of legal opportunities or finding some kind of loophole in this, this, these rules that these legal rules that have came down. I would encourage you to not try to solve homelessness by, but by having more obstacles for the homeless to over, overcome. I'm an attorney. I um am, I was also homeless here for a while. And so I experienced a homeless and it was out of no fault of my own. And there's so many other individuals that have that. We see with COVID coming that there's even more individuals. The chronic homelessness is not the biggest issue. We have more people coming out becoming homeless. We have mothers with children. And so when you look at a daytime ban on an ordinance, when it's assuming that everyone sleeps at night, when you can see that a lot of individuals don't sleep at night because they're worried about the security. So the daytime ban would prevent them from even sleeping at all. It would make it a bigger obstacle for women. It would make a bigger obstacle for individuals fleeing domestic violence. We're living on the streets. Is more safe than living in the house that everyone's so concerned about these manmade temples and the, the, the problems that are occurring with them because of the fact that that the property is more important than the people at this point in time when we're looking at these ordinances. I would encourage this committee here, when we look at um the practical effect, you know, we, we were listening to the city attorney talking about resources available. The problem is, is that these resources are being said, but they're not available. I went through a year and a half in a shelter and there was no resources available. And I, I did everything that everyone told me to do and I could not get any help at all. And so the resources, a lot of people say these resources are available, but they're just not available. And we're looking at the individuals who are on the streets that would be impacted significantly by these. We've got individuals who are not able to move. They are not, they're disabled. That's why, you know, with the Salvation Army closing down, so many people who were once staying in this overnight shelter have no place to go at this point in time. They have no place to go. They have no one to turn to and everyone is saying, do better. And it's hard to do better when there's nobody that's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joanna Hayes. This is my sister Molly Brooks. As a concerned citizen and member of Kitsap Erase, I am standing up for our unhoused neighbors. It is wonderful to hear the programs to create more affordable housing that is so needed, but it cannot meet the needs of all of our neighbors. The situation in Bremerton right now is untenable. But focusing on and, on and enforcing an anti encampment law is not the way to fix that. Our unhoused neighbors have nowhere to go. We are vastly under resourced in housing and shelter space, in mental health care, and in support of our neighbors currently using substances in a way that is harmful to themselves and our community. This anti encampment law is not the solution. Shelter space is the solution. Supportive and compassionate medical care is the solution. Resources are the solution. I will also let it be known that there will always be people who feel more secure in their own space or cannot and will not stay in a shelter. There are numerous reasons for that. A legal area to camp could alleviate that problem. Our unhoused, our unhoused neighbors need help. They deserve safety, security, and compassion, as do all members of our community. But an anti encampment law won't help anyone. It will just criminalize the people who need the most help.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Molly Brooks. I'm a member of Kitsap Erase's Housing and Homelessness Team. I'm against anti camping ordinances. Our unhoused neighbors have nowhere to go. They need services and to get them, service providers need to be able to find them. It is inhumane to kick them out of where they are living. When camps are cleared out, people lose the few precious belongings that they have. This can result in people losing their only ten and therefore the roof over their head. Getting arrested for camping can give unhoused people a record which can be detrimental for them later on when they apply for a job and other situations where they need a background check. We have plenty of public spaces we can make available for people to camp. We also need more shelter space and services for our unhoused neighbors. No one should be penalized for camping, but anyone who wants to live inside to have somewhere to go. To hear that people downtown and especially at the Marvin Williams buildings aren't feeling safe is upsetting, especially the children. The Marvin Williams building is a treasure of our community and kids should be able to play outside there. But anti camping laws are not the answer. Services, shelters, and affordable housing are. Please do not criminalize homelessness.
Thank you. Let me go to, oh, no, this one, the room, yeah.
Hi, I'm Patricia Morris. Um, I am in strong opposition to anti camping ordinances. They're inhumane and effective and counterproductive. Research has shown that this pushes this very vulnerable population into the margins even further, making it more difficult for them to find resources and more likely to end up on the street. I empathize with business owners and families who have people living on the street in front of their homes, but this is not the fault of the unhoused population. This is due to not having enough services, not having enough mental health services, substance abuse services, and affordable housing, which is becoming a huge, huge problem in our society and it's going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Akulier Karen Vargas. I'm part of the Kitsap Erase Coalition. Um, we've worked diligently to look at this issue and I think it's important that we come together as a, a city, uh, as a community, uh, our families, uh, to, to really, really see, we have to get to the root of these issues. We can easily push it off on this side of the community, on that side of the community. We can push it off on the homeless themselves, but until we are able to come together and diligently look at root causes, because we can, we can nitpick it and we can be able to say, this is what's needed here, this, but if we're not looking at root causes of how we're going to move forward to create these solutions for what's happening here in our community. And I understand it has, um, we've not, and I'll say it like this because I want to use my words very carefully. We have not experienced what we're experiencing now at this level ever in our history. And so we don't have all of the solutions, but we know we better address it. Some of these issues could have, we could have done some intervention and prevention before it got to the level it is even now. But because we didn't address it then, now we have the issues laying before us that now we have to come up with some solutions as to how we would move forward together to address these issues. So as we do move together, yes, we have all of the resources here. But how well do we work together in a collective way, in a unified way to support with these services? Because the services are there. We've not come together as a community and had the difficult conversations that need to be had so we can come up with the solution. Many hands make light work. And between us all as a community, as a county, I think we can come up with some pretty good solutions. If we're working in a unified way to address some of the challenges that we are facing here. And if we don't get on top of it now, it is going to bite us in our behinds later. So we need to be able to come together and have these conversations so that we can say, you know what? We know this is an issue and you know what? We're not going to put our families at risk, our children at risk, even our vulnerable population at risk. What we will do is come up with some, some applicable solutions on how we're going to move forward to deal with it. We can go back and forth here, uh, month after month, year after year, but until we put hand to task, we're going to cut, keep on having to deal with it.
Thank you. Let's do one more in the room and then look for folks online. A minute, we'll keep going till I have another chance. Please go ahead.
Hello. My name is Casey Kelly. We spoke earlier. Um, even and I, we coached T-ball together, our sons played T-ball together. And the fact that, I mean, I, I see everybody, we're all involved in the community. We all have children. We all want to, nobody wants, we all have compassion. But when I ask somebody to stop blowing fentanyl smoke in my direction and they tell me to wait till I go to work so they could rape my daughter and kill my dog. I don't want to hold hands and sing kumbaya after that. When my son asks me, are the cuckoo strangers out here barbecuing again? Because it smells like burnt rubber and plastic. The, the emboldened nature in which they treat our street like we are the ones inconveniencing them. They laugh at me. They threaten me. They catcall my daughter and my wife. They steal from my children. Not saying, I don't think those people want shelter. Uh, they, the entitlement to go to somebody's business and just spread feces everywhere or to come down to my basement and try to break in to do drugs on my personal private property. We're not talking about where there's already tents or a park. We're talking about my home where I have my children. So we under, we understand that everybody's on hard times and we're, everybody's coming up here talking about vulnerability, but who's more, more vulnerable than a child? I just, I know there's no perfect solution here, but the crime element has to be, the element that it brings is it's almost making this neighborhood unlivable. And I can't sell my house because I'm not going to make any money off of it. Nobody is going to want to live there. I don't want to live there anymore. And I love this town. My entire family is from here. I, I moved here to be with my family and now my family is fleeing. And I just wish that we could do something about the crime. The, the crime is the big issue here. It's, there's drug deals that, that happen in front of my house. There's assaults that happen in front of my house. I get out of my car and get hit in the head with a skateboard. I have no idea why.
In ten seconds.
So vulnerable, sure. But my kids are vulnerable too. And this community is going to be vulnerable if we don't do something about this.
Thank you. Let's go online to Susan Brooks Young.
Thank you, uh, members of council and Mayor Wheeler. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I did send an email earlier today, so I'll keep my remarks very brief. Um, in listening to the presentation that was made a little bit earlier, um, the one concern that came to mind for me out of listening to that is we are really good in Bremerton at saying there needs to be a solution and talking about it and even identifying a solution. The $10,000 for the portable toilet is an example. But saying that you've got a solution and then actually acting on it are two different things. And my concern is I don't want to see one more change or one more whatever be decided by council only to have nothing happen afterwards. If there's not the follow-up, if we don't do what we say is important and what needs to be done, then we're just kicking the can down the road again. And we know that moving the people around doesn't work. That's not a solution. But we do need to act. We do need to figure something out. It's critical for people who have these just issues happening around their property. I live downtown, I know. But I also understand that a heck of a lot of people are homeless who are not doing those kinds of things and we need to do something to help those people as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Yes, let's go to Marwan Cameron.
Evening again, council. I have a few comments and a few questions. Uh, very appreciative of, uh, the gentleman who's the homeowner and the business owners that came to speak. My question is, what is the plan to just decrease the experiences of these families? The business owners, the homeowners and the community center and not shift the problem to new families, business owners and new homeowners. I'm very frustrated by the language of camping. It makes it sound like it's somehow romantic. And while the state uses that and maybe the country, we don't have to do that. I'd like to see us be novel in how we talk about this issue. These folks aren't camping, they're surviving. And they're not doing that very well. Has the city completed any analysis on where they are most likely to migrate? Does city council know the negative impacts of moving people further from the lifeline resources that they count on? Is there a proposed timeline for enforcement? Winter is right around the corner. Not that the ninety degree heat is any better. What happens to those that come into a resource area for services and the bus service stops running or does it turn MLK into a proverbial sundown town for the unhoused? As inflation, resources dry up, how do we keep more individuals from becoming unhoused? MLK never looked the way it looks now. How does finding or jailing those experiencing homelessness going to be impacted? Will they be fast tracked into housing? Can you share out and be hyper transparent about what is happening and the progress? Is there a coordinated effort to protect the unhoused from others who prey on them and others around them? Lastly, Kitsap Strong, the county and others and G2 had a barbecue at Bay Vista a couple of weeks ago and a porta potty was made available just for that event. Just like the BlackBerry Festival and other events where we wouldn't consider not having bathrooms for those patrons, it can be done. Many unhoused individuals have not recovered from COVID. Our children being out of the classroom for years is evidence of that. And we are seeing in stark, in living color, what happens to those most vulnerable in our community by the other side of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? And then we'll go back in person. Yes, Chrissy Lyson, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, you've had many intelligent people talk and I, I'm not going to repeat the points they already have made. What I will say is that, um, and I have great compassion for the business owners and, um, the community center, the impact on them of this. And I agree with Cameron, Marwan Cameron, excuse me, that, um, all we're, all you would be doing is scattering the problem to other parts of the city. It doesn't solve the problem. You make, you, you know, outline certain areas where people can't be and, and if you're including MLK Way, it's where all the services are that they depend on to, for the meager existence they have. Um, that's not a solution. And they're already, since the shelter closed, um, in May, they're already migrating out further from MLK. I, for the first time in thirty years of being in my home in downtown Bremerton, have folks camping in, uh, behind my house in the alley. I'm not saying that as like I want anybody to do anything about it. I don't like, because I know they're, they're there because there's nowhere else to go. Um, but what I'm saying is I've never had folks in that part of town, um, having to, um, spread out that way. We don't have any shelter services. The, all the things outlined in the affordable housing plan that the city has that was outlined in the presentation, um, there's no outcome data for any of those plans. And what I will say is there's a mile long gap between, um, people that could take advantage of any of those programs because most of them are for people who are already housed, not the unhoused. There's nothing for the unhoused. Um, there's a mile long gap. And so that's, that's, don't put those in the wherethes of your new ordinance because those, don't congratulate yourself because there's, there's nothing there to, to resolve the issue of people having to be on public property and live on public property because there's nowhere else for them to go. Invest in shelters. Get a shelter to open here that actually is serving the people. Install public toilet facilities. I know that s- sounds like some of the feces were spread intentionally, but there's a lot of feces going on that is just be sure fact that there's nowhere else for them to go and have dignity. We all have the human needs, biological needs that need to be met. It is cruel and inhumane to just make their situation worse. It's, I just, I love the city and this is wrong, wrongheaded. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Let's go back in the room here.
I'm resident. This phenomenon of homelessness is a multifaceted problem, which came first, the chicken or the egg? We have drug problems, very bad drug problems. We have people that live as criminals to feed their drug problems and they are invading our community. The easier we make it for them to sustain themselves in that fashion, more will come. It'll get worse. We cannot help everybody in a very socially humane way and try to, um, lift these people up. They are criminals. There are those that are homeless because of other reasons and we all have empathy for them. We have social services programs. If these people that we have on the street do not take advantage of shelters that we provide them and we need to probably look at a better provision of shelters, then we have then we have to incarcerate them. Because they're not, they're antisocial. When they throw fisi- feces and and crap in a store, that is totally antisocial behavior and it's criminal. It's destroying their property, destroying their livelihood and threatening their families, their health. And if you have people that can't have their children out in their backyards and they call the police several times and the police say, well, our hands are tied. Why aren't their hands tied? Why don't we untie their hands? And make sure that they can clean up this problem? We need to take strong measures. Did you ever hear of tough love? We need tough love. I I empathize with people that have gotten into situations where they've alienated their families. They're no longer part of a community of a family. Families do stick together and help each other most of the time, but these people are not, they've alienated themselves from their families. And now they're creating social problems in our community. We need to sit, sit down and seriously consider tough love. And, you know, if you have people camping in your front yard and smoking stuff and your kids are inhaling that crap, it's not good. We have to protect our people that are taxpaying, law-abiding citizens. And those that don't care about the rest of us need to be treated with tough love. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love whoever spoke about, let's get creative and come together and find solutions. Thank you. I've lived in downtown Bremerton on 8th and McKenzie for over 20 years. One block from Casey, right across the street from Chris. And we have not had lately any more issues than we normally have had in the last 20 years. My husband and I moved downtown because we wanted to fight the NIMBYism that happens and the the desire to escape to the suburbs to get away from what's happening here. We wanted to be a part of it to a certain extent and help with the solutions. I think it's very important not to divide. There are good behaviors of homeowners and business people, and there are also bad behaviors. There are good behaviors and bad behaviors of homeless people and people on the streets. And I've seen both. And those people who are living down there on MLK are both. We are both. We all need to come up with solutions. I also agree that the the suggestion of the ordinance of of working within a time zone for the camping is really a Band-Aid, because we see those people the same folks, if you kick them off MLK, they're just going to wander around my neighborhood, creating havoc. And maybe they're creating havoc where they are, I don't know. But the issues, yes, are much, much deeper. And we do need a shelter and it has, that camping street is the way it is because we lost the kid, because we lost the Salvation Army Shelter. Yes, we still had a shelter problem even before that, but once that went away, boom, you got tense. Just look at it. So I also would love to offer, I I would love to talk, I don't know if task force is the word. I don't know if that's already been done before. But if there can be a resident, business people, council, task force on these issues, maybe it's, they've been there, done that, that's it, that's fine. But I would love to be part of that if something could happen. Erica Applewhite.
Thank you.
My name is Domichelle Wilson. Good evening, council members, good evening, mayor. First, I want to apologize wholeheartedly to those business owners and to the homeowners that live around MLK. Because I know what happens down there, because I'm down there all the time doing outreach. I think I see one, two other people in this room who are down there doing outreach. And and I bring that up because what I can tell you is nobody ever says, hey, Domichelle, come, come sit at this meeting with us and let's talk about what the answer is. Hey, Jocelyn, come sit at this meeting with us and talk. You guys are the ones out there doing the work. You guys know the, you guys know intricately what the problems are, maybe what the solutions are. I I I'm not going to tell you I have the answers to homelessness because I don't. I can tell you that I've been doing this for a really long time. I was a social services director at Salvation Army through COVID. I can tell you that the numbers of people that we housed got into cleaning sober housing was phenomenal when we had that 24/7 hands-on and that was with a team of untrained shelter workers. So can you imagine what we could do if we had some trained people? Helping these people and and call it handholding all you want, but when your neurotransmitters are not working correctly, it takes handholding. And I know this because I'm an addict in recovery. I just celebrated 18 years clean. And I was born and raised here in Bremerton. As a matter of fact, my father was a sergeant of the Bremerton Police Department. I was homeless here in Bremerton for 10 years, long before there were shelters or any of these other things going on. Thank God, long before fentanyl, which is a whole new demon. It's a whole new demon to to fight and battle. I have Narcaned more people in the last two years than I ever thought I would ever Narcan in a lifetime. I mean, it's, it's heartbreaking Narcaning a 22-year-old young man for the third time in a month. Telling him, I'm not going to be the one that tells your mom you didn't make it. Does that mean that everybody down there wants me to save them? No. There are people down there with untreated mental health and untreated substance use disorder that are way above even my pay grade. And I I have some letters behind my name. I have some letters behind my name, but they're above my pay grade. I do know that I come to these meetings and I listen to these things and I, we just never see a solution. When I heard there was going to be a porta potty, I was like, yes! And I'm like, how long ago was that?
Ten seconds.
I also worked for a company called Stephen Group International that provides security for Salvation Army and Kitsap Rescue Mission for $42 an hour, $42 an hour. They could provide security.
Thank you.
Evening, council. My name is Dan Heron, resident of Bremerton. I'm not an either or person, I'm a both and person. The crime problem is real. I feel badly for the business owners in the neighbors. Let's address the crime issue, but not, don't solve it by pushing the homeless away. There's got to be a balance. Let's do both and. I came up with some rhetorical questions for you. You're probably doing a lot of these, maybe all of them, but I think they're valid questions. What is the current scope and scale of homelessness in Bremerton? What are the immediate needs of the homeless population? What are the underlying causes of homelessness in Bremerton? What are the barriers preventing homeless individuals from accessing existing services and support systems? Are there gaps in service provision or challenges related to coordination and outreach? How effective are our current homeless assistance programs and initiatives? What are the best practices and successful models from other cities and regions that we can learn from and potentially replicate? Are there policy changes or regulatory adjustments that need to be considered to address the root causes of homelessness? How can we better collaborate with local community organizations, nonprofits, faith-based zones, institutions and service providers to pool resources, share expertise and maximize, maximize impact? What role can the city council play in facilitating partnerships between the public and private sectors to address homelessness? Are there opportunities to engage businesses, developers and philanthropic, philanthropic, I can't say that, organizations? How do we, can, how can we engage and involve the homeless population themselves in decision-making processes? Are there mechanisms for meaningful participation and feedback to ensure their perspectives and needs are taken into account? What long-term strategies can we develop to prevent homelessness and create pathways to permanent housing and self-sufficiency? And finally, how can we raise public awareness, foster empathy and dispel misconceptions about homelessness? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jessica Torres Riley. I'm a resident of Bremerton. I'm a patron at the shops in this area. I'm also a volunteer and attendee at events at the Marvin Williams Center. I just wanted to say that, you know, we knew the Kitsap Rescue Mission was closing in 2019. We knew that the Salvation Army, which only became a shelter with 74 beds in 2020 because of the pandemic, was going to be closing May 1st. We need to be proactive in our approach to the issues of sheltering and having services for the homeless population. I also know that the city council and the mayor are currently working on the Bremerton 2044 Plan. And I want to make sure that we're not just taking a reactive approach to the current issues we face, but we're taking a proactive approach to the future of Bremerton and how we want to handle this situation. As I said, 74 beds went away when Salvation Army closed. I know the Quality Inn on Kitsap Way is closing and those residents are moving to the Pacific Building Shelter Project in Port Orchard. I'm not a resident of Port Orchard. I'm a resident of Bremerton and so are the unhoused population here. And so we need to make the services available in Bremerton. There are neighbors, there are residents of this town and we need to be supporting them, not sending them to a shelter that's honestly not near much services out in Port Orchard. I understand that the ordinance we have on the books is not constitutional and that's why we're talking about it, right? It's your, it doesn't do anything because it can't be enforced because it's not in alignment with what those ordinances were intended. And so I would encourage us to repeal it because it's not doing anything for us. And I would encourage this body to put its focus in on the issues at hand. I'd love to see a similar presentation at the next meeting from people who are providing the resources in this area about what they would want to do and what they would want to see from us and that we put in or ordinances that support that and that make that possible. And you know, I, we've heard from a lot of people, it's a multi-pronged approach. Homelessness is not a crime, but the crime that is around is a crime. And, you know, I don't believe in necessarily criminalizing drug use. I believe in trying to support the people and the root causes of those issues. And I'd like to see the city invest and have a really solid plan for how we want to engage with that in the future. And yeah, I just thank you for taking this up and taking public comment. And I want to make sure we don't make any quick rash decisions here. We really take the time to have a prolonged long-term approach for Bremerton.
Thank you.
Hello, Jane Revolowski. We've gone over this toilet issue for, I think I've been coming to for three years now. You have the money set aside. That should have been a done deal a long time ago. And I understand it wasn't council's move to write the check. But you did provide the funding. I too would like to see all the service providers that we give money to and the county gives money to, to give them three minutes at the mic and have them line up and tell us what services they are directly providing to the homeless. And it seems like there's a lot of nonprofits around that have made a name for themselves, but I haven't seen a lot of what they've produced. So we need to be giving our money to the folks that are actually getting things done and ask the other ones why they keep applying for and getting grants from the city, the county and the state. And I'll come in here and tell us what they're actually doing with the money, because meanwhile, we got people suffering on the street.
Thank you. Anyone else online with their hand raised? Yes, let's go to Robin O'Grady online.
Good evening, everyone, council members and Mayor Wheeler. This is Robin O'Grady. I'm the executive executive director of the Kitsap Rescue Mission and we are located at the Quality Inn in Bremerton. I just wanted to clarify, first of all, we are not closing. We, we transitioned from 29 shelter beds when we were located down on 6th Street in Bremerton to 80 beds at the Kitsap Pavilion during COVID as requested by the community and Kitsap County to help really the folks that were on the street stay well. And since that time, when the county needed their building back, we moved to the Quality Inn. And when the Salvation Army closed, we increased our capacity from 80 beds to 105 beds for that reason. I agree with so much of what many people have shared. I think it's really important that we do get down to the root causes of homelessness. The 105 folks that we have in shelter, and by the way, we have 19 children and 13 families in shelter along with our individuals. They're receiving comprehensive services, including integrated mental health services and substance use disorder services as well. We have a full-time licensed mental health counselor and a full-time substance use counselor on our staff, integrated onto our team. We've seen tremendous success with people getting into treatment, getting mental health therapy. We have some employment development opportunities for our folks. We're working with SCUCAM, Kitsap WorkSource and some other organizations. I will say that the largest challenge that we've had is not sheltering folks, it is moving them on to permanent housing. Many of our folks are low income. We, we're seeing a lot of senior citizens who are on a very limited income and with fair market rent in Bremerton right now for a studio apartment at 1150 a month, there's no chance for them to be able to move forward. So that's been really, really some of our biggest challenges. I know there are two teams, the heart team and the real team that are out there going to the encampments, working with the people to help them get into shelter and all shelter referrals come from the Housing Solution Center and we work hand in hand with the Housing Solution Center to get people into shelter whenever we have availability. But I just wanted to speak up on behalf of the rescue mission and let you know, we are, we are busy, we are full, we are providing really comprehensive services for the folks. And I I do believe more shelter is needed. We will be transitioning up to the Pacific Building probably within the next year, depending on when that building is is readied. And so, you know, more shelter beds are needed definitely in in Bremerton and Kitsap County wide. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back in the room here.
Hi, Mike Simpson. I'm a longtime resident of Bremerton. I was born and raised here. And this is probably the worst we've seen. It's appalling. But council president, looking to the government to provide the solutions is the wrong direction. It's the community that provides the solution. You just get to act on it. And that's, that's the question that we have here. Now, there are plenty of solutions that are out there, but many that we're never going to try because we know that we cannot do those things. What we can't do is we can't continue to enable the behavior that is happening. We understand that there are people who are, who are experiencing homelessness. But when they commit crimes, we should incarcerate them. Period. And this is, this is what we're hearing from, from the community tonight. We're hearing that. And we're hearing that that we, we're not an uncompassionate community. We're a very compassionate community. We have many people in the audience tonight who are from various groups are very passionate about this subject. That's why we're all here. I mean, this is probably the biggest crowd that I've seen in in all the city council meetings that I've been to. And looking for you to do the, to create the solutions tonight i- is is an unrealistic goal. It's incumbent upon us. And that's why I challenge everyone in the room tonight. If you are truly passionate about, about helping homelessness here in in the city, go and find one of these people. Bring them to your home. Take them in for yourself. House them in your house and help fix the problem.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments and double checks online? All right, go. Oh, yes, please come up.
I wasn't even going to speak today. My name's Kelly. I'm a nurse at one of the local hospitals here, threw up here. I was also a homeless youth from age 13 to 15. It was safer on the streets than it was in my abusive household. I had some really good outreach, some grassroots effort come and pull me off the street and mentor me. And so now I work with vulnerable populations. I'm down on the streets myself every weekend. I even bring my kids along with me to show them everybody's one circumstance away from homelessness. It doesn't matter how much money you have, how you were raised, addiction as well. It hits every single population. Let's build Bremerton better. Let's connect Kitsap. We need to work together. We're only as good as our foundation, right? So if we can get everybody kind of on the same page, working smarter, not harder, I think that we can make a difference. MLK definitely has seen an increase in the last month since Salvation Army closed their services. Also, the bus routes are down on the weekends. I go down with a group of people from church, and we feed people on Sundays. We give them sack lunches, because many of those people don't have food over the weekend. So that does increase the crime. Local business owners, they're looking for food, they're looking for resources to get that food. Yes, there is a drug problem. That's not just right there on MLK. It's not exclusive to that. It's countywide, it's countrywide, it's worldwide. If we can get the services to help that along, that would be great. I know myself, discharging patients from the hospital, a lot of the times they have nowhere to go, so we dump them on streets. And that's not unique to Kitsap County either. So how do we handle that, right? These people that are just going to continually be homeless due to disability or medical issues, what do we do with that? Last weekend, I was on the streets doing outreach, and there was a seventeen-year-old girl. She had just spent her first night on the street. She had a job, and she just graduated. Her parents kicked her out. Her concern was, how do I go and get to my job if there's no shelter available? And I don't know, I haven't seen her since. So I don't know what the solution is to that. I do see an increase in prostitution. I do see an increase in pimps. I do not see an increase in police patrols or outreach with the mental health navigators. I have yet to see them. I'm down there picking up trash along the streets. I average about six to seven garbage bags for a couple of hours down there doing outreach, and I throw it away at my house. You know, I don't know what, you know, when it's gonna affect any of you guys, but I hope, you know, none of you guys or your children end up homeless. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Mayor. My name is Neil Foley. I'm a resident of Bremerton. The current code is non-constitutional. Let's get rid of it. Let's start talking about homelessness. Let's start talking about mental illness. And let's start supporting the people that know what they're talking about and have lived this, are educated about this, and that are in this community helping right now. The answers are here. This is a really tough problem, and it's not going away. We could shove it somewhere else, or we can attack it. And I say, let's attack it. Let's get rid of this one. Let's write a new one that deals with homelessness, mental health, and let's get on down the road. And I only have one further question. If we're putting porta potties outside of the library down here, and I don't know what the circumstance is, why aren't we just opening the bathrooms up again and cleaning those out a couple of times a day and just letting them use the bathrooms that are there, that they have been using? Unless there's something I don't know. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to?
Joe Walter, West Bremerton, have got no genius solutions. I'm trying to understand. It's unconstitutional, so we have to get rid of the camping rules. I'm going to toss out some things. Can we not change the existing language? I think the camping rules are initially in place with a thought about recreational camping. That must be what it was written for initially. And now we're dealing with homeless people using a rule that has to do with recreational camping, and that's not what they're doing. So maybe if we reworded it so that if it's survival camping, something along those lines, so that we're not... Okay, so it's more direct. And maybe that kind of camping becomes permitted. And if you have to go forward and move people during the course of the day, let camping only happen during sleeping hours, a huge problem that obviously is going to happen, and that happens to unhoused people over and over, is the loss of their personal possessions. So they have to lug their camping gear around with them all day. Is this a wild idea to imagine that we could somehow provide a place for their stuff to be secure during the hours when they may not be camping? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Cooper. I just want to say that I feel for the folks that have the businesses downtown here. I just got noticed that one of my tenants is going to be moving because of the damage, broken windows, poop on the ground, the whole thing, right? And so, and I can understand why they're moving out. In fact, they're moving out of the city and moving out to Mason County. Anyway, I heard Kitsap Rescue Mission, when she was speaking, that she sounded like they had a lot of really good solutions, not just housing, but they also had the resources available to help people out that really do need the help, because that's kind of what, that's the real crux of it. We want to help these folks out. Everybody doesn't want to see this going on. The last thing I want to address is that I would like to see the police department allowed to actually put criminals into jail. It's not so much we don't want the solution to be taken care of. We want people to be taken care of. But if there's going to be those that are going to be bad citizens, then that bad citizenship should be rewarded with the consequence of their actions, right? And that's what it comes down to. We really want them to understand. I grew up with consequences, right? And with those consequences, I avoided the bad citizenship. So thank you.
Thank you. Second, no one else online? All right, yep.
Members of the council, our neighbors. My name's Eric Niebon. I am a resident of eight hundred block of Martin Luther King. I see this. I've seen it over the last four years, from when kids could play on the streets to now nobody plays on the streets. I've seen the camps come and go. I've seen them cleared out two or three times a year over the past four to five years. They always come back. We solve it temporarily, and then we let it go right back. One of the ladies that was sitting up front here, what she said times two. I heard a lot of word salad tonight. We've had all the phrases. We've said all the things that people want to hear. But just as what they pointed out with the porta potties, nothing's been done. Now, I walk down Martin Luther King every morning. I see the rats. They don't sleep in the day, they don't sleep in the night. They're there all the time. There's a nice owl that goes after the rats. Just like the homeless population there, there's people that are preying on them because of their easy, convenient access on Martin Luther King. We need a shelter. We've sat on our thumbs for the last three or four years, knowing we needed a shelter. Some solutions have been done. Maybe we need to concentrate all these grants and all these little monies, buy a couple acres and put up a huge barn to put people in. It doesn't matter. We have to do a shelter. We have to give options. What we have now is inadequate. And it will continue to be inadequate. And the best way to describe what's going on on Martin Luther King is going back to the Great Depression. It's a Hooverville. Those folks don't have an option. Crime goes with them. We don't have an Al Capone to have a soup kitchen down there to make good publicity for himself. What we have is people trying their best, but it's not enough. I don't have a solution. I think that we need, when we clear out an issue, we need to keep it cleared out. That means that if we solve Martin Luther King, the minute the first tent set, first tent goes up, we have the folks that are out there right on top of that person, we get them, get them, we help them right up before we wait till sixty tents. You guys just voted two million dollars plus for expenses. What if you had to save that up to the December meeting and vote for it all at once? That would be really painful, hearing it all at once. If you do a little bit at a time, it doesn't seem so bad. It's how you eat an elephant. You start one bite at a time and get as much as you can. Now, again, I want to see those folks have a safe place. We don't have a safe place. The solution is not Martin Luther King. The solution is not letting that happen. We've got shelters built, but they've built there. You can't get to the fire hydrant of that entire block because it's surrounded by derelict vehicles, pallets, and junk. What if those fireworks the other night ignited the camp? We're not helping them, we're hurting them.
Ten seconds. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Karma Foley, and I'm a retired human service worker. And so it's been interesting listening to all the comments. I really like the one lady that got up here and said, you know, everybody care about the people that are down there. We care about the business owners. But I think you can solve the problem if you don't know what the problem is. And simply calling it homelessness put the wide swath across each and every individual that got there a different way. So in order to help those people, it does mean helping each individual person with whatever their issues are that created that problem. I can tell you, as a family member who just lost someone who was living down there, I'm heartbroken. You cannot love them enough to save them. You can't plead enough to make them stop. This is bigger than most of us could even imagine. But I implore you, there's lots of money going to different agencies, to the state, in recording fees. I mean, all sorts of money is being thrown at this. But we don't have room for shelters for people. What people need is hope. I mean, this human condition that they're living in is deplorable. No one's going to get better that way. I mean, can you for a minute? I can't imagine how well I would do on the streets. I just ask all of us to really
Ten seconds.
get those shelters up and running. Being in a shelter somewhere is better than being in the ten on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, Michael Simons. I'm a resident of Bremerton. I just want to kind of refocus everybody here. We're talking about homelessness, housing, drug use, criminality, et cetera, et cetera. The question here today is, we have an ordinance that's unconstitutional. And we have two options: amend it and hope it slides through, or get rid of it and create something new. And I think what we need to do is we need to create something new, get rid of the whole thing and start over. Because we're not going to fix homelessness today. But we are going to fix the fact that we have a law that the Constitution does not support. So we need to focus on that. Following that, what we do focus on homelessness and drug use and all of this other stuff, I think we also need to focus on not just shelter solutions. One of the biggest issues when you create shelter solutions and not permanent houses or halfway houses or things like that is you focus the density of the unhoused population into specific areas which cause economic depressions. When you spread that out through multiple neighborhoods and multiple distances, that ends up causing the community to be able to help a greater amount of people. Whereas when you create a density, it creates a community of avoidance. And I want you guys to make sure that when we look at solving these issues, that is one of the things that we're looking at. So we don't end up with places like MLK where all the house values go down. We're even peddled in place where people are saying, I don't want to live in this neighborhood behind Winco because it's too close to that. When we create these large bed solutions, it creates problems for the neighborhood, and I think that we could solve that by doing like ADU support, where we're helping people get ADUs built so that they can help a person who's gone through a treatment program and they need a long-term solution. Let's get them into a single-room house instead of putting them in a seventy-unit bed. I think that's what we need to look at, and I think that'll help us moving forward.
You. Make sure I didn't, oh, there we go. Oh, wait. No, I'm so sorry. It's just, it's once per person. I'm so sorry. Once per person.
Really?
Yes. Yes, to keep it fair.
All the conversation has stimulated some thought here. I wanted to share it with you.
Once per person in a public one. But yeah, send an email anytime, thecity.council.
Okay. Well, my closing and party thought is...
Thank you. Anyone else online? Dave, anybody else online? All right. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll close public comment with a big thank you to all for everyone for speaking up today, and we'll continue this discussion and study session next week. Thank you all so, so much. Again, thanks again to everyone who's emailed as well.